We're back and we acknowledge the fact that technology isn't always perfect despite the amount of times we rehearse this. So I know this looks like my mouth is moving, but the words don't match my mouth. So we ask that you listen more than watch. And we'll be very slow and deliberate in our presentation and speak clearly and enunciate each and every one of our words so that at least you can hear the information being presented. Maria Massaro, our Administrator for Human Resources, who oversees much of the school safety plans in the district, I'm going to ask her to report. I have to caveat her report with one statement. The work that was done by the committees, and these were done by committees, was done pre-COVID. So what you won't see in these safety plans are things that we may need to come back to depending on how we return to school in September. What do I mean? Unless, Maria, I'm wrong, there's going to be some new changes to policies and practices that may involve discipline with respect to health and safety based on COVID. So I have to give that disclaimer out there at this point. Without saying anything else, why don't you take us through it, Maria?
Thank you, Mr. Laurie. The first thing I would like to say is you are absolutely correct. All of the work done was pre-COVID and we do need to add some things to our safety plan and to our code of conduct at the appropriate time. Given that, a little bit of background for those who may not know, the safety plans and the district-wide code of conduct are work that is accomplished annually pursuant to a statute that was enacted in the year 2000. The district-wide code of conduct and the comprehensive district-wide safety plan teams are made up of stakeholders. And, Mr. Granerri, I think the stakeholders are listed on the next slide. The code of conduct and district-wide safety plan committee members are listed here. I'm hoping that you could see them. Generally speaking, they're made up of students, administrators, parents, teachers, and the representatives from the fire department and the Niagara Falls Police Department. Mr. Granerri, if you'd like to move forward. On the SAVE Committee, the district-wide safety plan and the district-wide code of conduct were reviewed pursuant to the requirement that we do so annually. When and if changes are made, we are required to bring those changes to the Board of Education and to the public through this public hearing process to allow for comment period before final adoption and distributing to students and parents and sending to the different policing authorities. For this year, again, pre-COVID, minor changes were made based upon the committee discussion and recommendations from the New York State Education Department. Recommendations were made for an increased emphasis on mental health support, and this is trauma-informed care. We have partnerships with the University at Buffalo and Niagara University to address this addition. I don't know, Mr. Laurie, if you would like to make any comments on the mental health support. That's totally up to you.
Now, as you know, by some of the actions that we've brought before the board, more and more of our staff training is focused on mental health supports for the students and sometimes the staff as well as parents in the district. The last training we did prior to COVID was on a Saturday, the 14th of March, and it was through Gateway Longview, putting together strategies for our counselors and social workers. One of the training that's going on right now through Mr. Corella's office is a major survey with the University of Buffalo, having staff members identify their most pressing needs for mental health training upon our return from COVID. And we've received a very good turnout. We're looking for 500 or 600 staff members to respond. We're more than halfway there, and that'll be an expectation I share with them. So our emphasis will always be on reading, writing, math, science, social studies, art, music, et cetera. But we've really made a big shift with respect to safety around treating children with mental health issues.
Thank you. In addition to that, we have an initiative regarding alternatives to suspension. So we added language regarding restorative justice, the Niagara Falls City School District Youth Court, and the focus on, as Mr. Laurie just indicated, the social and emotional needs of our students.
It had been very successful to this point, and we've talked about restorative justice at these board meetings throughout the year. We had a middle school up to this point in the year had fewer than 10 suspensions, which is almost unheard of. Almost unheard of it for a middle school. La Salle Prep had fewer than 10 suspensions through March 13th. It's unbelievable, and that was the willingness of people to work together to find alternatives to suspending children. As an aside, knowing that we are removing the CEC alternative school from a separate location and bringing that back into the high school at the evening or on Saturdays is another means to try to get kids to pay their consequence if they violated the code of conduct, but to return to school much more quickly. Another reason that we do youth court. So we tried to put together a package of restorative practices that teaches kids to restore their behavior, not sit home for three days or five days, do nothing, come back and commit the same infraction. That's the belief and thinking behind it. So for the first time, you're seeing a code of conduct that emphasizes restorative practices more than I think we ever have.
Absolutely. And then you'll see here the additions and the language of the code of conduct have to do also with, excuse me, alternatives to suspension, for example, restorative justice. We've also added school social workers throughout the code of conduct because of the addition of, I believe we have seven now, Ms. Laurie.
Seven.
You have seven.
For the viewing public, for the board, prior to COVID, under the new ESSA law, federal law, we were no longer only going to be adjudicated by test scores. We were going to be adjudicated by test scores, attendance, which I think is going to have to be out the window, and number of suspensions. So we were trying to get a leg up on that by instituting restorative practices. And to be even more forthright and direct, we know in this district that we had an oversubscription of black males being suspended. We've been cited for that, and it's not appropriate, and it's been our goal to reduce that statistic, which I felt we were making good progress this year until COVID hit, of course. And that's why we've asked to codify this with these special programs in the code of
Thank you. That's the end of our presentation regarding the changes. This is the part that if there are any comments or any questions, this is the part of the public hearing.
So we have a hotline, Brian and Ray, 425-2966. Anyone listening, 425-2966. Of course, that's area code 716. If you have questions about the code of conduct, anything that I said was written or Ms. Massaro reported, now would be the time for the public to have an opportunity to dial that number, 425-9...
29.
29, thank you, Jim. Mr. Kinselmi, 2966. You'll be greeted by a very nice woman. Her name is Judy Glazer.
Give him a couple of minutes to...
Yeah, we'll give him a couple of seconds, yeah. While we're...
While we're waiting, Mark, maybe you can just expound a little bit more on our work with Buffalo.
With...
And with the help we're going to be getting from the colleges and the psychiatric...
Sure, sure. The University of Buffalo paid through a grant, through our mental health, our $1,000,000 two million mental health grant, our partners with the University of Buffalo, they're providing the staff to do the training. The colleges, the University of Buffalo, they're our partner. They have two very skilled trainers. I know that during the weeks of COVID, many teachers have begun to go through the seven-hour course. It's all recorded, it's all, you know, tested and marked off, so we have a record of those that go through the course, certificated, et cetera. And it's just the start. I think the other thing is, as I said, more of our training is going to be around these supports as well as math, science, reading, social studies. We're very good at that, but when many of our teachers, including myself, came out of college, we weren't trained in these mental health supports, and it's an ever-changing thing. Judith?
We have no callers, Mr. Laurie.
Okay.
No calls? I'll repeat that again. Our number here is 425-2966. We'll give you a few more minutes if there's anyone that wants to address anything about our district safety plan.
Or if you'd like to make a donation to the district budget. I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. I feel like we're on the telethon, Earl.
Nolan Thomas.
We'll also, Earl, if you want to pledge something, Earl will sing. I know he's got a very good voice. I've heard him on the telethon in the past. I've made pledges.
So I think it's very appropriate if there's no more calls and Mr. Laurie gets on his box there. I'm going to call for an adjournment, to call for a motion to adjourn the public hearing at this time. I have a motion, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Mr. Petrosi, Mr. Velardo, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hearing none, meeting adjourned.
Motion adjourned, thank you.
Sounds so good, Brian. Still coming through? Okay. So we can go right into the public hearing for the 2018-2019 school district budget. This is also being held remotely. And the same number that we mentioned earlier, if you're listening, 425-2966 is the number you can call if you have any questions whatsoever on the presentation by Mr. Laurie and Mr. Jurizo. Anything with that?
Mr. Kinselmi, I'd like to call the roll.
You want to call the roll first for everybody? Thank you.
Dr. Verstis?
Here.
Mr. Bass?
Present.
Mrs. Dunn?
Here.
Bishop Dobbs?
Excuse me.
Mr. Cordella?
Excuse me.
Mr. Paredo?
Here.
Mr. Petrosi?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Kinselmi?
Yes.
Seven present, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to start the meeting with the pledge of the flag for a formal reduction. Will you please stand? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I will say the prayer in the absence of Reverend Dobbs. Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us safety together this evening so we may conduct the business of the district according to your will. Please continue to give us the wisdom, the patience, and the cooperation necessary to ensure we take the best care of all your children. Please also bless our staff that directly oversees the well-being of its community's children on a daily basis. May they too be blessed with the wisdom and patience to care for, mentor, and nurture those in their charge. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Laurie, thank you very much. We've spent the last three months as a board and staff working through this budget. Last meeting, you approved the budget, you approved the tax report card. I guess the most important thing to tell you is nothing has changed. We've received no new information from the governor, from the federal government. Nothing has changed that would alter any of the numbers. Now, we can see the governor is going back and forth to Washington to do whatever he's doing there. We can see that he likes to rub elbows with Chris Rock and Rosie Perez and Bill Gates, but we don't see a lot of help to localities, and in our case, school districts. So the assumptions we made, the support the board gave us and using quite a bit of your rainy day fund, along with your support in lessening the budget through attrition, still holds. The approval of the budget will, the reduction in numbers to the budget, if that were to come, and I pray for the children of Niagara Falls, the staff, and the community that it doesn't come, but if it were to happen, we'd have to come back to you with a disciplined spending approach that doesn't allow us to spend to what our new revenue level would be. Let's hope we don't have to get there. I read an interesting article yesterday about the approach that the Ohio Republican Governor, Mr. Petrosi, took, and he cut aid according to wealth as opposed to cutting it to everybody, which I thought was a very refreshing way to do things. So Cleveland, a city in Ohio, received a very low cut or minimal cut. Yet a city like Solon, that I've visited, which is very wealthy, received a larger cut. Seems to make a lot of sense to me because poor students, poor children certainly need more help. We hope that the governor will do that. Something else that I can report that we don't know is that, and we're hoping, even though we can't as district employees promote a vote of yes or no, we're hoping that the community trusts our fiduciary responsibility, of which members of this board have done in the last many, many years. But if that budget were to fail, and Mr. Jurizo will address that, we don't know what date we'd have to come up with a contingency budget. I think that, again, responsible, no tax increase. At times when I see districts throughout New York State proposing up to 19% or 20% tax increases, I see layoffs of entire departments, social workers, other areas. You have none of that in this budget. The state proposes a very scripted format, of which Mr. Jurizo, Ms. Holliday, and the entire financial team have followed to the T. And at this point, I would ask him to take you through the proposed budget for the listening and viewing public, and I appreciate you allowing me to make those comments.
Before you start, Mr. Jurizo, with your permission, I just want to again repeat the number that you can use to call in if you have any questions at all about the budget, It's 425-2966. Mr. Jurizo?
Okay, by statute, we have to do a public hearing. We do that this evening for the budget vote that occurs, or the budget counting that occurs on Tuesday, June 9th. You can start voting as soon as you receive your absentee ballot. They're in the mail, but we still have to go through the process of this public hearing. So first thing we'd like to talk about is our tax levy history. From 1994 to 2013, our tax levy remained the same. In the year 2014, the tax levy went up a little bit, and since that time in 2014, it has stayed, remained the same. And for the year 2021, for next year, the proposal in this budget is that that levy again remains the same. Through district leadership, through instructional programming, through just really, really good planning, we have been able to move the budget forward from year to year without impacting the tax levy. In regard to the budget itself, historically, 1819, we were at about $144 million. This year, almost $148 million. The proposed budget for 2021 is $153,168,496, $153 million. That's an increase of $5,217,000, a percentage change of 3.53%. We'll get into a little bit of detail as to why it seems as high as it does. There is a very good reason for that. The difference represents increases in salary, obligations, benefits, transportation. We'll talk about these things a little bit later on. But the big part is the $2 million in debt service or our district mortgage payment. So of the $5 million, $2 million is just paying for debt that we incurred and doing our capital improvements. The next slide, a busy slide, a very busy slide, is, just shows where the revenues come from, dollar for dollar, in regard to those revenues. But what we'll show you graphically, and it's a lot easier to see graphically, where those revenue dollars are coming from. Ray, if you'll go to the... Yeah, there we go. So where do those revenues come from? $6 million is, as the superintendent mentioned, use of our surplus of our savings. It's taking money out of our bank account to balance our budget. There's some miscellaneous revenues, but the biggest, the largest, the lion's share of our budget, $114 million, almost $115 million in revenue, comes from the state. And as the superintendent mentioned in his remarks, any, any, any impact on that number has a genormous, has a large impact on the revenues and what we can do here in the district because, again, the lion's share of our revenue does come from the state. So any change in that revenue has a huge impact on the district. And then there's that local revenue, that tax levy, $28 million, what we collect. And this is money that we collect from the current levy as well as the levy from prior years. People are always paying their taxes. By the third year, we're made whole, we collect all of our money, but sometimes it takes a little bit longer to collect. As a percentage, you can see on the next slide, the percentage of revenues, again, the lion's share, New York State, 75%. Three-quarters of the money that we receive comes from the state of New York. Local revenues, 19%. The use of fund balance and reserves, the money that we're taking out of the bank to balance our budget is about 4%. A little bit higher than we'd like, but these are difficult times. Highlights in the revenue, state aid, there was an increase of about $800,000, but those were in reimbursable expense-based aids. Those are the aids where you spend the money in year one, and in year two, you get reimbursed for those expenditures. So our expenses went up this year, so we'll receive a little bit more aid next year. But the lion's share of our aid, which is foundation aid, was basically flat, and that's what causes the most angst in this year's budget, is that flat, that, actually, was a slight decrease in foundation aid. There was a pandemic adjustment of $4 million that the state reduced our revenue by, but then the Federal CARES Act funding was added to our budget in the exact same amount of $4 million, 449,321, and that kept us whole for this year at this point. So we're using fund balance and reserves to balance our budget, 6.2 million. $4 million of our fund balance, we're using reserves from retirement of about $500,000. EBOLRs for the folks at home, if you're keeping score, that is for post-employment benefits. When a person retires and leaves the district, they're entitled to certain funds, and we can use those savings to offset those costs. And then there's, we're taking money out of our debt reserve. If you're setting money aside at home to make your mortgage payments, we're doing the same thing here, and we're taking money out of that account to help pay our debt payment, our mortgage reserve. As far as local tax revenue, no change to the tax levy. So that's the revenue side. On the expenditure side, we have to report to the state our expenditures in three parts: administrative, capital, and program. Administrative is just what it sounds, the administrators, the clerical people associated with those administrators, the insurance costs for the district, principals, vice principals, and the supplies and contractual costs related to those types of expenditures as well as the fringe benefits associated with those people, about 10% of our budget. And capital is the maintenance of our physical plant. That's our maintenance people, our custodial people. It's the utilities, the cost for the lights, the cost for heat. It's the supplies and contracts associated with that. It's for our debt service, our mortgage payment, lion's share of our capital cost, $17 million. Included in this year's budget proposal is the proposal to buy a bus, and we'll talk about that later in the presentation. All told, about 19% of the budget. So we've got 19% in capital, about 10% administrative. Where does the rest of the money go? Where is the lion's share of our expenditure? It is in program. It is in teaching and learning. Teaching regular school, special needs, supplies and contracts, transportation. This is the bucket of money. This is where all of those costs associated with instruction are held, and it is almost 71% of our budget. That is where it's supposed to be. The lion's share, we're about teaching and learning. So when you add it all up, it's $153,168,496. In a graphical form, the tallest tower, program, exactly where it needs to be. So when you look at expenditures by category, salaries and wages, about 38%, benefits, 24%. Then our mortgage payments, our debt service, transportation, utilities, and other. And you'll look and you'll see, holy smokes, that's a lot, that's a high percentage for salaries and benefits. We're a people business. It is all about the people, teaching and learning, people in the classrooms, the help in the classrooms, all of the people that make this district go, and that's the lion's share of our expenditures. When you look at it graphically, you'll see, once again, the tallest tower, our salaries and wages, and our next tallest tower, our benefits, and then some of those other costs that go into making up our budget. Highlights in regard to expenditures, $2 million includes contractual raises and steps for all bargaining units. There was some increase in our pension costs, social security increases based on the salary increases. Salaries go up, social security goes up. We have to pay our share. Cost of healthcare for both our active and retired employees, our tuition. Sometimes we have to send children out of the district for very specific and special instruction, and there's a fee associated with that. Those costs have been on the rise. We have some increase in transportation contracts. Our contracts will be going up by whatever the CPI for this month of May is. It hasn't been published. We're forecasting 2%, it might be less, and our contracts will roll forward for that, except we had to have a new contract for the aides that ride the bus, and that was a little bit more, but overall, we're looking at about a $375,000 increase in contractual transportation costs. And then there's BOSI's costs, there's an increase there. For the folks at home, BOSI's is where we share expenses with other districts. And because we get to share those expenses, they're a little bit less, and the beauty of BOSI's service is that we get aided on those expenses. It's one of those expense-based aids, and we receive that reimbursement the following year. So we have some increases in our BOSI's expenditures. We also, when our foundation aid was flattened, we had to go back and relook at our budget. So there were, we had to look for some ways to save a little bit of money without affecting people, without affecting program, and so we have some reductions through attrition. That means if someone retires, we're just not going to replace them. Nobody is getting laid off, and nobody is losing their job. We honor those who are retiring, and we're going to make do, unfortunately, we're going to make do without them. We're sad to see them go, but we're happy they were allowed to, they're able to retire. There's breakage, and what breakage means is that a person who was at the top of the salary scale retires, and we replace that person, we actually hire someone to take their place, they make less. So there's a savings there. So that's called breakage, we're able to save. We're going to move some benefits to our very big grant program. We're allowed to do that, so we're going to move some benefits there, and that takes some pressure off this budget. And there were some benefit reductions because of the attrition, because of the breakage, and there were some contractual reductions, BOSI's, private transportation, health. We talked about, we're going to buy a bus. We're going to buy a bus so that we don't have to pay for private... We're going to buy a bus so that we don't have to pay for private transportation. We did an analysis, and we feel we can do it less expensively and more efficiently if we bought a bus and hired a driver to help us with these very extreme and unusual situations where our bus companies, as good as they are, and they are very good, as good as they are, can't, just can't seem to find a way to meet those needs. So we had to go to yet another company, and that was very expensive, so we're now going to try to do it ourselves. So we did have some savings in our expenditure highlights. The superintendent mentioned a contingent budget. If the budget were to be defeated, what happens? Well, there are things that we wouldn't be allowed to buy. We wouldn't be able, as ironic as this sounds, we wouldn't be able to buy student supplies. The big one, transportation, would be limited to state limits. That means children who are currently getting bused, because we bust them, because it's the board policy to bust them, we wouldn't be allowed to bust them because they live too close. So we really, really, really would have to look at that. There's equipment we wouldn't be allowed to buy. So there's regular equipment, and then there's that bus that I just talked about. We would not be allowed to do either of those things in a contingent budget. A contingent budget would result in about a two hundred nine thousand dollar reduction overall in the budget, and it would reduce the district's ability to help students acquire supplies, it would replace restrictions in transportation. It would also impact the community use of schools. Currently, the superintendent has the ability to waive the fees that we can charge for the use of our facilities. In a contingent budget, he no longer has that latitude. We would then have to charge the fees, and in a contingent budget, the tax levy does not change. It remains the same at twenty-five million, eight twenty-eight, nine eighty-nine. So some very busy numbers here, a lot of numbers. You probably have a tough time seeing this at home, but it just explains the difference between the approved budget and if the district were going to go into a contingent budget, what items would be affected and where that two hundred and nine thousand dollars would come from. The next slide, you will be receiving this in the mail, well, something that looks like this, not exactly this, it comes later. This is the property tax report card. This got sent to the state. This is a snapshot of our budget, and it shows where we are this year and where we propose to go next year. It shows budget numbers, the increases, where the money is coming from. And then on the second page of the report card, it talks about our savings accounts, where we think those savings accounts are going to be at the end of the year, and what of those savings accounts, what we propose to use in next year's budget. You, at home, will receive the budget notice. They went to the post office today, they will be mailed out tomorrow, and you'll all receive one of these, and it shows where the budget is for this year and where we're proposing the budget to be for next year, and what would happen if we had to go to a contingent budget. It's very concise and explains what the total is, those three parts, how much of the tax levy, we're under the tax cap, for those that are interested, we're under, not by a lot, but we're still under, so we still just need a fifty percent vote, but we are under, and it talks about those three-part numbers in the three-part budget. And you will receive that notice at home. That was the front page. The next slide shows the back page. It shows what your estimated basic star exemption would be, four hundred and sixty-three dollars. So we encourage you, if you haven't signed up for the star, especially you, senior citizens over the age of sixty-five, you qualify for the enhanced star, which is an even bigger number, please go out there and talk to the city assessor and sign up for the star. We need to tell you that our transportation contracts roll from year to year to year, and you need to know that in your, when you're voting on the budget, because it's a multiple-year contract. And the law says, the regs say, that we have to let you know that from year to year to year, that contract is rolling forward. So we just want you to know that, and that the transportation costs in the budget reflect those contracts rolling forward year to year to year. The next slide. This is what you will see, part of what you will see, when you open your absentee ballot envelope that you receive at home. The budget vote is you're voting on the number. You're telling us, we here in the City School District of the City of Niagara Falls, you are authorizing us to expend, to spend one hundred fifty-three million, one hundred sixty-eight thousand, four hundred ninety-six dollars and not a penny more. We can spend less. We can always spend less. We will not, we cannot spend more than what you, the voters, approve. So that's the number we put forth, that's the number we're asking you to weigh in on, that's the number we're asking you to fill in your little circle and decide yes or no on the budget, is one fifty-three, one sixty-eight, four ninety-six. You know, we hope we've explained where the money is coming from and where the money is going, and you'll see that we've tried to be efficient, we've tried to be transparent, we've tried to be very straightforward on the amount that we're asking you to allow us to spend. Think of it as our allowance. This is, we're asking for a little increase in our allowance for next year and to keep doing all of the really good things that the district has been doing, all of those programmatical things going forward in these strange and different times, but we're asking you for approval on that number. In regard to the voting, it's, this year, unfortunately, it's only by absentee ballot. Ballots have been mailed to all registered voters. They include a self-stamped envelope to return. It won't cost you anything to send it back, just have to fill it out, send it back. We just, we really, we really want you to return that ballot and have your vote counted. If you don't receive one, and you happen to be listening to this, please call our clerk, Judy Glasser. Her number's right there, two eight six forty-two oh four, and we'll get that ballot to you as quickly as we possibly can. You might get to meet our driver, Mark Barone. He might just actually knock on your door and deliver a ballot. So we encourage you to look at the information, look at your budget mailer, get your ballot, and fill it out, send it in. Any questions, give us a call, and we'd be more than happy to help you.
While the phones are probably going to burn up, that number, once again, is four two five?
Two nine six six.
Two nine six six. We're going to wait a few minutes here. Four two five, two nine six six is the number to call to reference questions to Mr. Gerizzo or myself. While you're reaching for your phone, your rotary, your flip phone, your burner phone, I just want to make a couple of comments. Mr. Gerizzo displayed for the community that, and the board has approved through their vote last week, the allocation of a lot of reserve money. And we've always believed that's a rainy day fund, and as I've said, it's a tsunami. But I want the viewing public to know, this board did not hesitate to do a couple of things. No tax increase, no tax increase, and use your tsunami funds before you touch taxes or people, or programs, programs, people, or taxes. That's what the nine members of this board did first. They trusted us, that was their direction, don't raise taxes, don't raise taxes, you should be able to run this district on that. They said, don't touch people, don't touch people, and don't touch kids' programs. We had hoped to add some, just can't do that now. Now, let's all remember that we've got to keep our fingers tight and crossed for the governor not to cut us more. Point number two, while you're getting to your phones is, and Joe did an excellent job, going line by line in an expeditious way. This is a two point one percent budget-to-budget increase, if you take out the debt service payment, two point one percent, probably about what the CPI is for any business in this country. Next, while the board gave immediate authority to use their rainy day funds, I want to tell the viewing public that the board will have those rainy day funds replenished by at least two point six million dollars. That's the money we don't believe we needed to spend between the pandemic starting and June thirtieth. It's going to come out to be four point six million dollars, but we have to hold that in abeyance for a transportation issue that I'm not going to get into today. So that rainy day tsunami fund will probably be cut in half in terms of use, so it's not going to be that bad. And finally, we're able to do this as our construction projects don't get touched, air conditioning is moving quickly, and four elementary schools. The board insisted to the elementary parents, and I know they haven't gotten to all the schools, that we get air conditioning in those eight elementary schools and the high school, we'll work on the last two. That will not be touched, and this other statistic will not be touched in the budget. The fact that in the last fifty-one school days, we've delivered two thousand, two hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one meals. Two hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one meals have been delivered to the community. That won't be impacted. So when you read bleak times throughout the state, there's always a silver lining, and I wanted the public to know what the board emphatically insisted that I and the staff do. No tax increase. Use your rainy day funds and don't touch a person or a program.
There are no, there are no residents participating this evening, Mr. Laurie.
Thank you, clerk. Mr. Laurie, our board is very, very pleased, and I think proud of that the challenges we gave you, you met. I think we've done an honorable thing for our district. I think we've done an honorable thing for our taxpayers, and most importantly, our students. We'll be able to give them a full education. We didn't cut their programs, and God willing, we will be out of this academic and be able to get back to normality.
Yeah.
I think we all thank you for that. There are no calls, so at this time, I'm going to call for a motion for adjournment from this public hearing. May I have a motion, please? Mr. Bass?
Second.
And Mr. Paretto, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, meeting adjourned.
Mr. Board President, members of the board, if, and you can keep the camera rolling there, if you would allow me five minutes to give you a couple of updates?
Absolutely.
If that would be all right, to give you some updates, for five minutes, please? Thank you very much, just, and I'd like the public to hear these. First of all, public thank you. If you have questions, I know this was a public hearing, but I know there's protocols and so forth and so forth, but moving off protocol, if you hear something in the wind or on that very official site called Facebook, don't ever hesitate to call us. We'll answer your questions anytime. I'd like to give you seven updates, very quickly. Our next board meeting is Wednesday, June tenth. That's the certification of the election and a board review session where we'll have topics. Ms. Massaro is fully into staffing for next year. She's into her mask in staffing, meaning we are going to be presenting a very thick personnel report for June. And we'll get you as much of that information prior to, but we are now filling in retirements and movements, voluntary transfers, involuntary transfers, all on the instructional side. Secondly, we do have to fill a couple of administrative openings on the principal level. We'll be recommending those two positions to you on June twenty-fifth. But Ms. Massaro, and I know that she has been aided very, very nicely by a new intern who's probably guiding most of her decisions, but she's doing a lot of staffing right now. If you have questions about staffing, please, members of the board, see myself or Ms. Massaro. Head Start, let me give you a ten-second update on Head Start, because you know that we've been pressing this grant very, very hard. Head Start, the current grant expires officially February of twenty twenty-one. There's an interim director that will be running it. They will be a group of people that has worked in a hundred other districts throughout the country. Their purpose is, when there is a change in administration from a Head Start to a new Head Start provider, to provide a warm handoff to the next group. I'm not stating that we are going to be the recipient of the warm handoff. We could, I pray, I hope. I was informed today that the federal government does have some additional questions that they're going to require us to complete, which we will complete before we hopefully receive the warm handoff. But this is not an abnormal situation when you're not returning the current provider to the work, and there's that need for the warm handoff, meaning a transition. That's number, so that's where we are with Head Start. Next, in front of you, I have a sheet of paper about class of twenty twenty events. Two of those events have been completed, and I'd like to speak about those. Last Friday, over four hundred teachers and staff, led by the idea of the Niagara Falls teachers, provided a gift bag that was delivered in a socially distant way to the homes of each and every one of the four hundred graduates. There was a limit of twenty-five dollars on the bag. I would guess that there was not one bag that didn't have fifty dollars at least worth of gifts, gift cards, candy, sweatshirts, et cetera in them. A wonderful job by the Niagara Falls teachers. Today, I participated in the cap and gown pickup that was covered by one of our big three stations. The cap and gown pickup featured people entering the Pine Avenue entrance to the Fields with socially distant teachers, parents cheering with horns, cowbells, signs, screaming for kids. Parents stopped, waved, I pulled my car up, the reaction was the same. Oh, it's you. Then I moved on. But when the kids went through, they were going crazy for the kids. They picked up their yearbook, and I know Mr. Campbell sold about sixty extra yearbooks today, there's only about twenty yearbooks left, which is a really good thing. Yeah, it's really good. Then they drove around where the class advisors, Ms. Barstis and Ms. Shirella greeted the cars, along with Mr. Wilson, the theater teacher waving his noodle in the air, saying congratulations. Caps and gowns were given, medals and awards and honors were given so that students can be dressed for their photos in full regalia. We received a number of thankful, tearful, appreciative emails today saying, wow, it wasn't that great. No one got out of their car, people were given their bags in their windows, kids were crying, kids were happy. It's almost like we're starting a new tradition by doing that. On Tuesday evening, the second, there will be a virtual senior awards night from the TV studio, where, you know, you get your scholarship night, y'all have been there through your kids and others. That's Tuesday. June ninth is the, Mr. Contento's hosting his sports awards night. He's been using Twitter to get sports out. Remember, June tenth at two o'clock in the bus loop, we're asking the retirees to do just what the kids do. Staff will be lined up in that loop, cheering on the retirees who come through their cars. June thirteenth is a major motorcade, they're calling it Class Day Motorcade. Niagara University's Dwyer Arena parking lot will be where the cars are staged, decorated, kids will ride down Lewiston Road, College Avenue, past Maple Avenue, down Hyde Park Boulevard, past Hyde Park, past Gaskell, down to Buffalo Avenue, past La Salle Prep, will end up going to their schools in their neighborhoods. They wanted to drive by Capital Cleaners, but it was much too expensive to do that, so they took a different route. But that's the thirteenth, it's a Saturday, it begins at eleven-thirty at Dwyer, so you'll have to time it out. Thank you, Judy. The twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh, the twenty-seventh is the graduation procession. Cars will assemble in the fieldhouse, they'll line them up, kids will process around in their cars, get their diploma, speeches will be- Speeches will be played, pictures will be shown, formal pictures will be taken of the graduate and parents if necessary. That evening, that's the evening when the Falls lights goes blue and gold, and the lights will change for the Canadian colors. And we are working on, but don't have specific details about maybe a cross Rainbow Bridge celebration, still working on that. Thankfully, our mayor and city council provided that June is Niagara Falls High School Graduate Month. You are billboard, I believe, the senior class, I believe, the Niagara Falls teachers, and I know the Niagara Falls Board of Education purchased a billboard that will rise for one month on 47th Street, is where ours is, I believe, yours is. It will say, "Congratulations, graduates, class of 2020. The Board of Education's proud of you," something to that effect, blue and gold. That will be going up on June 1st. Seven banners are, are hanging around the city. We'll put one up at City Hall. Those are some of the upcoming events I want you to know about. Yes?
If you would, on the graduation, could you, is, in the pictures, is that the same day?
Yes.
How, they'll get their diplomas?
Get out.
In a loop and get out?
And then drive away in a loop.
So, they'll come, get their diploma, take a picture, get back in the car?
Yes.
And that's how we're gonna do it?
And loop out. I need to find out where the board will be expected. I thought that was gonna be your question. I'll find out where they'd like the board to be at that time, Ross.
I would assume somewhere in that area.
Somewhere in that area, I don't know. Probably have to be separated. Unfortunately, there won't be any handshaking that day, but we'll make the best of it. Next, if I may, Judy, I wanna, and Ray, can you put on the screen the election calendar and timeline? Do you know what I'm speaking of? Can't see it well. Yellow means we've hit the date, and, let's see. Take a look at that. We've hit every date. We've hit every date on that calendar for the election and vote. Again, I wanted this to be shown because of the work of Judith Marie Glasser. She hit every date on the, on the nose. There were 26,557 ballots mailed. 26,557 ballots mailed. They should be in homes. Did you receive yours, Judy?
I have not received mine yet, and I would encourage people to be patient. You should receive it tomorrow, the next day. I don't want people to get too nervous if they don't see it in their mailbox, you know, right away. It's coming.
It's coming. They went late Tuesday, some arrived yesterday, some arrived today, some arrived. I would think, Judy, not to put a lot of pressure on you, but by Monday or Tuesday...
I would certainly think so.
By Monday or Tuesday, if you haven't, she will, she will kill me, but if you haven't, if you haven't, please contact the district clerk. 286-4204. Judy will research it.
Be happy to.
Yeah. You have to call Judy by Monday if you haven't. We've talked to a family who did get it and a family who didn't, and it's just the way the mail runs. Joe and Ray have been working on that May 30th date. These are the mailers. Ray got the mail ready and took them today?
Yes, they were delivered today to the LaSalle branch post office.
So, the budget mailers will hit the 30th deadline? And then we have nothing until June 9th? Then we'll have hit all of our dates. June 9th, Judy and Mr. Massaro will have a very specific and didactic, clear way of counting the ballots with elections inspectors from both parties, double checking, double counting. Obviously, public, it's going to take a lot longer. Obviously, we cannot have anyone in the room, but we will offer the service of a report from time to time.
It will be up on the screen in real time as it's being input, just as it has been in years past.
And I know many like to come here. We need to practice social distancing. Please, we can't have, we cannot have groups of more than 10. Board members are certainly welcome, that you're, you're nine, myself, staff won't be part of it, so I cannot deny the board members that, but I ask that entourages and others don't come. The 10th is your next board meeting. I put that up there because of Judy's work, and I'm super proud of it, and you should be too. Yeah, no, she...
Thank you, it's very kind.
I, yeah, I go into her office 71 times, and 70 times she's smiling, one time she says, "I got a problem, but I'll figure it out."
I must say, cool as a cucumber.
Yeah, so far, cool as a cucumber, Ros.
And since it's the first time through, nice job.
Thank you so much.
Three final things, and then there is a budget question that I'm sure we can answer. We will answer, I don't know what protocol is, but we will answer it. Three more things. I, I did a, on a personal basis, I believe I texted you this, I did apply to be, there are four superintendents gonna be chosen in the state to be part of the region's reopening. I got a call from the Board of Regents just 20 minutes ago. I believe I'm gonna receive a letter to be either the superintendent's rep in Region 1, 1 or 2. There's four regions, so I, I asked for that, so you know. It's about reopening. I wanted to participate. So, I'm understanding that that announcement will come next week. I'll have a lot of opinions, obviously, but I just wanted to make you aware, I will let you know if I'm selected or not, but the Board of Regents did call me. I'll represent, if, if selected, I'll represent you as best as possible. The COVID team, of which almost everyone's here, Maria, Joe, Earl, Brian, Ray, Judy, myself, union presidents, Julie Dorr, Dr. Joy and Severoli, and Rick Corella, meet every day at either 1 or 2 o'clock. We have begun to discuss the stage four return. You know, education's in stage four. We've kind of scripted it that stage four would hit about July 6th if all things were considered good. On July 10th, we'll present you with our plan for how we would reopen buildings with more than the few people we have in here. We're trying to follow those rules. Finally, before I close and say thank you and answer the question, I wanted to congratulate Dr. Ron Barstis. NISBA was never able to get here. Dr. Ron Barstis has been awarded the NISBA Level III Mastery Level Board Member Certificate. So, congratulations, Dr. Ronald Barstis. Ron, did you hear that?
Yes.
Did you hear that?
Thank you very much.
Do you wanna know who wasn't clapping for you? No, Earl, Earl Smeele stood up. Joe, the, this is a question, I don't know if I need to read the name, I can read the address. It came from 1513th, 100th Street. How, can you speak about how COVID may cause increases or not cause increases in the budget next year that you presented? That's a question that came for, from a resident, I believe, I know our attorney's listening, but I believe we should put that on the record, that a question did come in.
Most certainly.
And it was, "Will COVID cause increase in next year's budget? To the best of your knowledge, is that factored in? How would you answer that?"
It, it will impact next year's budget and probably the budget after that. There'll be a, an immediate impact in that we are, excuse me, we are spending more money for cleaning supplies. We're spending more money for personal protective equipment. We're gonna be spending more money on technology. So, those are all things that are gonna be impacted by the virus, basically on a, on a personal level here in the district. It's also gonna have a much more macro impact on the district in that the state has a, now up to $13 billion deficit because people are not working, so they're not earning money and paying income taxes. They are not spending money and paying sales taxes. So, all of those revenues that would come into municipalities and the state especially are not being collected. And if the state isn't collecting the money, they don't have the money to distribute. So, that's gonna impact all municipalities, not just school districts. It impacts us greatly, but it also impacts the city and the county and the towns, and it impacts everyone because the pot of money is a lot smaller now because we're all hunkered down and we're not working and we're not spending and we're not, we're not, that money isn't flowing through and, and not being sent along. So, will it, will it come back eventually? Absolutely. But it's going to take time in recovery to get people working, earning, paying, collecting, and, and down the line. So, there will definitely be an impact right up front for this current budget year in terms of the extra dollars we have to spend to keep everyone safe, but then it'll have a little longer-term effect on the money that we'll receive from outside sources because of monies not being spent. And I hope that answers the people's, because it's a very good question.
Yeah, it is a good question. I'd like to add on to that. Joe mentioned cleaning supplies. One of the things that every district will need is cleaning supplies, so our Niagara Orleans BOSIs has put together a comprehensive bid from, for everything, and certainly in bulk, the BOSIs can purchase more masks, hand sanitizer, shields, gowns, slippers, gloves. We are part of that consortium build, bid, so we will get some relief on our BOSIs bid and we'll buy off of BOSIs, right, Earl?
Yes, sir.
There's some specialty items that Earl will have to buy, but we'll use BOSIs. The second thing, because the questioner might be, well, where are you gonna get the money from if you're so tight? There are places in the budget that are not going to happen, but we left them in the budget. And let me give you a for instance, and it's a sad for instance. We, we allocated money for summer school and summer camp. We did not take that money out of this budget. Are we gonna have summer school and summer camp? No, because of the pandemic. That's money that we can use to purchase, to do what we need to in a way that's a little bit more free. Some of it is grant money, but some of that money to make those BOSIs purchases, because you've gotta pay upfront, any other PPE that we may have to buy now in the BOSIs bid, Plexiglas, door tags, things that Earl, we've been telling Earl he's gotta start buying, we will have some money within this budget to shift to buy protective things using the BOSIs bid and buy unforeseen things. Where will we get it from? I say very unfortunately and very sadly, summer school and summer camps and things like that. That's the first pot I know of to go to. And I'm not happy to say that, I'm really not. I much would rather have summer school and summer camps, but I know there is some money that's not line item, gonna be line item spent. Would that be an accurate place to go, Joe, first? And there probably will be, depending on how we come back to school, and I do not want to get into this conjecture now. There may be other places where we will not spend money that you've allocated for certain things because of the way we come back. That budget assumes we're coming back in the way we came back in September of 2019. I'm not sure on May 28th that that's how we're gonna come back. I hope and pray, but I have my reservations. Hope that answers. First of all, thank you, caller, for calling in. Thank you for watching it. It wasn't my mom, it was a very nice person. Thank you for calling in, or my brother Tom, but thank you so much for calling in and participating in the school budget vote. At least our delayed speaking, we know worked, Brian. Only one second delay? Well, that's good, you can cut me off if I say something bad, you know? That's all, Mr. President, members of the board, members of the staff. Again, on the budget and election, Ms. Glasser, Ms. Glasser, Ms. Judy Marie Glasser, Mary Glasser is the one who will probably now be hired by the state to run elections.
Well, I'm always open entertaining offers.
She learned pretty quick, boy, I'll tell ya. Two, two years and she learned. Now, Judy, and of course, she's got great guidance on the side from our attorney, Mr. Massaro.
Absolutely.
Really great guidance. She's done a bang-up job. We hit every benchmark, and the high school has every benchmark with the, with the graduation plans. They've done an outstanding job. So proud to work with people like this. It's, you're gonna not believe this, but it's enjoyable to come to work continuously to see things moving with, working with everybody except Earl Smeele, but that's another story. That's all I have.